Let's meet at order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dale?
Here.
Councilmember Eugenia?
Here.
Councilmember Peckel?
Here.
Councilmember Tucker?
Here.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready to begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. With that, we have any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on. Any announcements of action taken in closed sessions?
Mr. Mayor, there are no reportable actions taken in closed sessions.
Thank you very much. Moving on to C, Public Matters. C1, for matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address a council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. If this requested the longer presentations, be submitted to the council in writing. Do we have any public appearances for items not on the agenda? Mr. Motowski?
Gary Motowski, 1840 Rodeo Drive, Imperial, long time no see.
Nice to see you, Mr. Motowski.
Been a while.
First of all, we've got an unsolved murder case in the city for over two years. I would hope that we make progress towards solving this. Obviously, we're a very small town. We might not have the resources to do murder investigations. I appeal to give the chief whatever resources he needs to get this solved, even if it means going outside of the city. Thank you for that one. You guys made the paper, and it was really disappointing. And I don't know who's right or wrong, I'm just a citizen, but there seems to be some type of dispute between the city council and the city chamber. I don't know who's right, I don't know who's wrong, but it would be nice if both you guys could work together to promote the city. Like I say, that should have got to the paper. It should have been taken care of before it got that far. We got this White Elephant Hotel with the Daniel Chu thing. This is getting, enough is enough. I mean, the poor Hindu guy at roadway hotels get inspected, allegedly with guns drawn. I talked to Jackie Sutton, who's wonderful down over at the fire station. He doesn't supposed to do inspections on these buildings once a year. That thing hasn't been inspected in years. Should be red tagged. It has boarded windows, boarded doors, and under the definition of a public nuisance. It sure is one. Please, do what you gotta do, even if it involves getting sued. Fix it, get rid of it. There's a stop sign that they just put in by Ralph's Road, before Ralph's Road, about 60 yards. It says, "End of 45." This is going north toward Ralph's.
Not a stop sign, not a speed limit?
No, no, it's not a stop sign. It just says, "End of 45." It would have been better if that stop sign would be put on the north side of Ralph's, because people coming off at Nickel, they say, "Oh, end of 45, they hit it and gun it, and within 50 yards, they're right on Ralph." And, you know, there's some people gonna be coming out of Ralph, there's no lights there, no stop sign. I think that stop sign, if it's within our jurisdiction, should be moved to just the north side of Ralph. If it's Caltrans, we can't do anything about it. That 45 mile an hour speed limit is wonderful. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I think it's great. All the young speedsters seem to have been slowing down. And, this one's, for Dennis, I haven't been checking up on this. How many current lawsuits do we have going? And how many were resolved in this calendar year?
You know, I can't speak to that right now. Most of the lawsuits-
No, just numbers. I know you can't-
Yeah, well, no. My point is, the lawsuits that the city is involved in, there's none that I'm handling. To the extent there is any, they would be handled through the city's self-insurance carrier, so that's a long-winded way of saying, "I don't have a number for you."
So basically, California public records request, then I can get all that?
That would certainly be one way. I would tell you if I knew-
I just wanna know, you know, I mean, I don't have time to watch you guys all the time. I wish I did, but you know, our life is kids, grandkids, I mean, other things. Thank you for your time.
Don't leave, Mr. Motowski. I'd like to share something with you, though. You brought up the White Elephant, as you called it, the hotel. So I've got the news update for you.
Oh, praise be to God!
The lending agent that Mr. Chu had been working with foreclosed on the hotel, and they took possession of it today. Mr. Chu is no longer involved, the lending agency now owns it. And so is a new owner on the hotel, and they are beginning a new operation. And Daniel Chu is no longer associated with that. So we are, the city has consultants in communication right now with the lender to start moving forward on that project. As of an hour and a half ago, conversations were taking place.
Well, cool. Hopefully it's in the paper tomorrow.
Well, I don't know if it'll make it there that fast, but just so you know, it did turn change hands.
If I get one more second. We all know that there's been allegations of a $36.5 million fraud pulled off by Mr. Chu getting, no, has there, has any, has anybody looked into, there's at least 27 EB5 visas issued on that thing, and it was a fraudulent project. Did anybody call NCS, what is that, USNCI, to look into the possibility of fraudulent EB5s being issued?
You're going beyond my purview at this point. I can't answer that. But I did wanna share with you, at the very least, that the hotel is no longer a Chu project, and it is now in a whole new direction with a whole new person involved, and we are excited to see that change. That's a positive move for the city.
Please do due diligence, I'm the new owner.
Thank you. We have anybody else for public appearances? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm just pleased to go, and I'm a resident of City of Imperial. I have three points today to bring into your kind attentions, and thank you for allowing me some time. My first attention, my first point is, it was nice to, you know, when there was first day back to school for our kids in Imperial, and I saw two law enforcement, city police enforcement people over there, and they both were, one was like, you know, helping the crossguard, and the other one was helping the pedestrian to walk through there. So by seeing that, I really feel comfortable and feel more secure that somebody's there to take care of our, you know, children. And second, it's a very important thing I would like to bring into your attention, that a couple weeks later after starting the school, my son brought into my attention that there was a canine in the school with law enforcement. Going through their, you know, the classrooms, and then that make me feel even better and more secure. And I extending my thanks to our city law enforcement, then, you know, taking care of kids, and saying that, okay, there is something, it's, you know, being placed, and we feel more safe. Third thing, it's major concern, I don't know if I should say, but I would definitely wanna bring into your attention that seeing that cannabis board on the bill, bill board for the cannabis, free home delivery, every time I pass that 86 highway, it gives me some worry some for upcoming generation, because I think so that's pretty good gateway to go to the drug prone behavior. So that's my opinion for that. Please, in future, if we can, just like, you know, do something better for our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We have anybody else for public appearances? Seeing none, we'll move on to C2, for matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address a council concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. Do we have any? Yes, sir.
Gary Motowski, 1840 Rodeo Drive. Hopefully you've got on your desk a couple pieces of information that I was able to get in regards to the relicensing of the dispensary. Like I told you guys before, I looked over the pro forma, doesn't make sense. They're paying $30,000 a month to Dr. Monty to lease that place. It seems very difficult that one would be able to have a successful business in cannabis without having the recreational market. The numbers don't pan out. What I'm worried about is that we gave the dispensary a license to operate for medical marijuana only, not recreational. I have talked with a couple kids that have gone into dispensary and basically filled out a form and gotten marijuana. They have no medical condition whatsoever. I was gonna have them come here and testify, but because it's a public place, they didn't want their names in the paper. But I urge you to listen to these people and basically tell you, not hearsay through me, about the process of getting cannabis at the dispensary. I hope that you will not approve the renewal of the license. They basically violated what we have told them is supposed to be strictly medical, and there are multitudes of young kids that I could bring in that basically have gone there. This is how it works. They go there, they fill out a form. Basically, they're medical marijuana. There is no face-to-face interaction with a doctor. There is no teleconferencing with the doctor. There is no talking with the doctor on a telephone. There is no patient-doctor relationship. And I think, Dennis, you could go into this about the legality of a doctor and a patient. There has to be some type of examination face-to-face. Basically, filling out a form, having it sent to LA, and having it okay is circumventing the privilege we gave this dispensary to come in our city and serve the medical community. Like I say, financially, I don't think they could survive without the recreational community, so they're circumventing regulations. I did print out the doctor who is authorizing these prescriptions. Hopefully you have that there. This person has been charged with a very serious offense. It was just filed on July 16th of 2019. It's not in the system yet, I haven't been able to pull it. It's a 12-page complaint against him, and they're actually action revocation of his license. So it has to be really serious. This is the doctor who's writing the scripts, writing the recommendations out of Martian Ash. He's out of LA, and I just got bad feeling about that. Take a look at his history and stuff, it just reeks. Matter of fact, I think one of the things you could see is his, a website called Weed Recs. You know, I don't know, it sure sounds recreational to me. And the kids that have gone in there, they basically say, "All you do is fill out a form," and boom, you got your weed. It's like, great. Please don't vote on this until you hear from these people. I couldn't bring them in, they don't wanna go public, but they will be more than happy to talk to you, you know, face-to-face, and then it won't be hearsay coming through me. Also, too, it's kinda funny that this doctor who's writing these recommendations for these kids, the kids don't pay him a fee. Wow, so he's doing this pro bono, he's doing this for free. I don't think so. Martian Ash has to be paying them. That's a violation of ethics. There's a conflict of interest. If you're a doctor, basically, and I'm a dispensary, of course I want you to basically approve 100% of the people. That's an unethical rec, that's an unethical relationship. Hopefully someone from Martian Ash is here, ask them how much they're paying-
And we'll take that into consideration.
Yeah, ask them how much they're paying this doctor.
Thank you very much.
Also, too, ask them how many recommendations has this doctor denied. Ask them how many percentage of their patients are under 30. Obviously, I don't have time to investigate this. I would have thought, because they agreed to do strictly medical marijuana, that either the police department or on the direction of city council, you would have thrown somebody in there like they do on underage liquor buying, to make sure they're following the rules. From what I understand, that has not happened. You know, verify, verify. You can't trust these people.
Thank you, sir.
But I will, if you wanna hear from the direct source, I'll bring the kids into you between now and the next meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Brett Peace, I'm the general counsel, principal owner of Martian Ash Inc. We came here to answer any questions you have. We have all of our principal people here, including our chief operating officer, our CEO, and our chief liaison. So again, we do view it as a privilege to be here. We've been open 42 days. We're doing our best to meet our commitments. I will address a few items that I've heard spoken to recently. We ourselves do have some concerns with advertising restrictions. I can tell you that we're working with Stay San Diego, which is a youth alcohol and drug prevention group, to try to work with the city of San Diego to put clearer restrictions on advertising, such as billboard advertising, and have them consistently applied. One issue we have as a retailer is being at a competitive disadvantage, particularly against some of these delivery services that are unlicensed. So we have to sort of strike a balance. But I would encourage community members in the city to engage with Stay San Diego or similar organizations out here in Imperial County, and have a serious discussion about appropriate advertising in public spaces. And I can tell you, we'll involve ourselves in that conversation, and we're open to it. A couple other things we heard, in regards to our pro forma, I do wanna make clear, we own the building as well through an affiliated company, so we pay the rent for ourselves. That was all factored into the decision we made to make the investment with you in Imperial County. We appreciate the investment of trust and responsibility you've given us, and we take it seriously. And I think we've made the investment over the last year to try to meet our commitments. I will say, as a medical-only establishment, we do have others. You know, there is some space there in terms of a view that you have to go in and see a doctor, all right, and get a prescription versus how it's accessed generally in the industry. I can tell you that the way we do it, it's consistent with how it's done up and down the state, it meets state requirements. We like to think that we don't serve kids, we only serve to a population of 21 and above. But if there are concerns in terms of how that's happening, again, we'll be at the table to have a discussion about it. But we operate very consistent with state law. We have multiple doctors that we've worked with, and on the front end, when we opened in Imperial because it was so new, and us as a new business have to sort of introduce ourselves to the community, we are internalizing the cost of the prescriptions and how we sell them. We don't view that as an ethical issue, we're upfront about it. And in fact, for our purposes, at some point, we'll have to discontinue that, and then see how that factors into our business plan. We are a medical establishment. I can tell you, in Mission Valley, San Diego, our flagship store and other stores, where we have recreational, our policies and procedures are consistent. If you went on the floor and asked any of our employees, what is their job? Their job is to educate. And there's no difference whether it's medical or recreational. You get the same treatment, the same education in recreational shops as in medical. We don't make that distinction operationally. Here, as the medical only, we are providing every customer with a prescription if they're not coming in with one, and they do go through a state compliance system to get that. So again, I'm happy to get around the table if there's concerns. If people have concerns with specific doctors, I would counsel you to give it to the city directly and bring it to us. That would be something we're concerned with as well. So if there's any other specific questions you or community members have, we're all here. If I can't answer it, somebody else from our team will come up here. And again, it doesn't seem like it's been a year, because for us, you know, through construction and then being operational for 42 days, it seems new. But we did wanna come here today and say thank you for the opportunity. We're gonna continue to hire locally, we're gonna continue to do our best, and we never anticipated there not to be discussions that needed to be had along the way, whether it's billboards or prescriptions. We're here, we'll be at the table, we'll be forthright, and thank you.
One quick question, just since we're on this topic now. It'll come back at the table, but I wanna ask you while you're available. Over the weekend, when attending the grand opening celebration that was taking place, somebody on staff made a comment, somebody on your staff made a comment about either the average age of your clientele, since you guys have opened up here, or the age, you know, or the majority of the clients coming in are above a certain age. Do you, does anybody recall what, who that was, or what that information was?
I couldn't kinda speak on it. Mission Valley is about 40, 50.
Can you step up?
Could you step up? Thank you.
I'm Jonathan Sacco, I'm the COO and principal owner of Martian Ash. In Mission Valley, it's pretty consistent with Imperial. We're seeing between 40 and 50 as our patients coming in right now.
The average age range?
Average age range is between 40 and 50.
Okay.
I can narrow that down for a more specific age, but right now, we know it's consistent between 40 and 50 years old.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd have to talk with the city about how we make reductions in terms of business sensitivity, but our POS and our sales are all run on real-time analytics. So some of the data that you're asking for, if you're interested in that, we can get that data to you.
I know you have it, so.
Yeah, so we have it. So if there's that kinda data that's important from a policy-making standpoint, by all means, make a request, and we'll get the data to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for matters on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, moving on to D, Consent Agenda. Anybody have questions on the consent agenda?
No questions from me. On the consent agenda item, I would like to draw attention to item D2, if I may, just to enter into the public records.
Thank you.
Item D2 on our consent agenda, for those of you that aren't looking at a copy, is the city of Imperial fund balance revenues dated June 30th, 2019. I don't know if staff has a way to bring that up onto the screens? No? Okay. But it is available as matter of public record. It has been, it is posted on the city's website, and it has, I know, been posted on social media recently. There were questions that have been raised in the public in the last few days, and allegations suggesting that our city was operating at a deficit. I just wanna make this a public record statement and point this out. Our records are transparent. They are always public, and our staff is always prepared to present them. And in this Treasury report dated June 30th, 2019, that would be the end of the last fiscal year, it showed that our general fund had an ending fund balance in the positive of $1.9 million, and that if you took a look at our overall, all funds' total ending balance, including our enterprise funds and some of the CFT funds, et cetera, we were actually carrying $33.3 million in the black as a city. I challenge a lot of cities in our size range in this state to be able to match that kind of, those kinds of numbers. I think our staff has done a marvelous job in working with the citizens of Imperial and making sure we are providing the services we need, and doing so in a fiscally responsible way. So allegations and insinuations that may go out in the public suggesting we're operating at a deficit are either gross errors or are bald-faced lies, and I don't want those out there. I want it publicly stated and noted, that we are operating in a very positive manner as a city. So that is one of the items we will be approving and accepting in our consent items tonight. And it is, as I said, available as an open, as a PDF document available online on the city webpage, for anybody that wishes to access it.
Thank you.
With that, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You got a motion, a second, please vote. Motion passed. Moving on to action items, E1, Discussion Action, Martian Ash Medical Cannabis Permit Review.
Who has this? Alexis?
Good evening, Mayor and council. You've already touched on this a little bit, but as per ordinance 795 regarding medical cannabis in the city of Imperial, every year you will review the conditions of approval for those that you award that permit to. Last year, on September 19th, 2018, you awarded, after a competitive process, the one all-exclusive permit to Martian Ash. As you already know, the entire team is here to stand for any questions that you might have. It is the recommendation of city staff to move forward and re-award that permit. We'll stand for any questions. Community development can answer technical questions. They've been great to work with from a city standpoint, and I know the team can answer any further questions that you have.
Any questions?
I'd like the P I O and COO to step up for a quick response, if they would, please. So you've been working with city staff for the past year to get this off the ground. You've been open now for 42 days. Can each of you share with me at least one of the things that you think has gone well for you while you've done that, and maybe if there's been a challenge, if you would let us know what that has been?
Well, Spencer Andrews, Public Affairs Director for Martian Ash. I think I've gotten to know most of you, you know, I think fairly well over this process. We've worked hand-in-hand for throughout, you know, from construction through operations. The willingness of the city to listen to, you know, a viewpoint that wasn't necessarily established in this community. This was a new endeavor for the city, and I think the willingness to be open and, you know, work with us to try and build the best project possible has been the best thing for us. Difficulties, I think, has been, you know, we opened in the dead heat of summer, so I think it's as simple as, you know, letting the community know that we're here. I don't think we've been able to show the entire community what we're about, our educational approach, and sort of our overall philosophy. And so we're excited that as more people, you know, sort of come back into town, we'll be able to show them that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jonathan Sacco, COO, Martian Ash. I think the biggest thing that we saw in the first year, I think anybody on our team would say, is just the excitement of the community. We did a job fair about three months ago. We had about 200 people show up, and just the excitement of the community to try to work. And I say this all the time, the 25 people we hired in Imperial are by far better than the 25 people we hired in Mission Valley. It just is because their excitement, their willingness to come to work, always learn, help each other out. I've never seen the teamwork that we saw here. So just that, seeing that, has been- So just that, seeing that has been really cool and just be a part of the community and a part of that. It's really, really exciting and honestly, no difficulties. I mean, we've dealt with San Diego. We are dealing with a few other cities right now, but you guys have been, pretty much everything you said, just say, just you've told us what to do. We did it. You guys respected it, and you guys welcomed us with open arms. So there hasn't been any difficulties with the City of Imperial, in my opinion.
One last question then for your council here. Tell us what you envision being something you want to move forward on and one of your goals for moving forward over the next year, since that's what we're coming in to look at, is what's happening in the next year.
Yeah, so March and Ash, this is a new industry, and we're an early entrant. So we have pretty rapid expansion. In fact, we're opening another one in Vista, San Diego County, in a few weeks. We have a couple of other permits that have been awarded to us. So we see growth. And one of the challenges, so I'll tell you all the challenges, okay? Some of the challenges are just, it's a startup for everybody, for the city, for the state. For example, we had some delay in getting our state license because there was a disconnect inside the BCC and the city. And I'll tell you, your staff was the one that proactively cleared up the confusion. But that was a challenge. And as legal counsel, as I look forward, I think one of the things we're struggling with on all our shops is enforcement, even on the legal stuff. The reality is the BCC is not doing anything. We like to think we do everything the way we're supposed to. So hopefully, as your only shop, we're not going to have so many issues. But from a legal perspective, I have concerns about who's actually doing the enforcement. Some of the cities, they say, well, we're only going to enforce the land use part. It's the state's responsibility for the cannabis part. I think that's wrong. So that gives me some concern. Some of the issues we've encountered, as I look in the next year, were, and this is on the research side too, but even on the education of our employees, it's difficult for the public education institutions to launch programs because of the federal issues. We actually are the sponsor with the Community College in the City of San Diego to get the first state grant for an apprentice program, where we're going to commit to help do some education and bring industry people in and hire out of that. That's something in the next year, I think we spoke about this with you before, that we would like to see. We can't make these types of things happen, but in our view, if we're going to launch that, we would like to see the City of Imperial and your educational institutions tie into that program. So on that front, that's something we're looking forward to. And then specifically with City of Imperial, it's a relationship. We're getting, hopefully, to know each other and trust each other more. And as we look towards expansion of March and Ash, we will be looking to make decisions about, you know, where is our ultimate home, right? We're in San Diego, we're in Imperial, we're in Vista, we're in some other places. I can tell you, there's always going to be community concerns. We'll be here to talk with the community. We're very open about that. And at least through the first year, I can echo what John said, there's been challenges, but I think the relationship with the city has been one of openness, and we just have got it done. And as we look to expand in the next year, we will be looking to where we locate. And that would be non-retail-related operations. That's one thing we're looking at. My big concern that we, I think collectively have, is there's going to be a lot of legal or quasi-legal activity in surrounding jurisdictions. And I think, I think we need to have a healthy discussion in terms of what does that mean for the City of Imperial from a policy perspective, in terms of decisions a customer has to make? Are they going to leave Imperial and put aside the money? All right? Is that really where you want them to be versus the shop that you have under regulatory control? And then the delivery stuff is really difficult for us, right? Understanding where people are going to storefront is one thing, but as a retailer that has delivery, our biggest challenge is most of the customers don't know that a lot of those companies on the billboards are not legal. And you guys have no regulatory reach over them. So anyway, we're looking to expand. We're looking to do it the same way we've always done it at March and Ash, form the partnerships with the local communities, be open about what we know, be honest about what we don't yet, and we go from there. But I'll say, the challenges were met so far. I think the challenges moving forward, we have a lot of shared interest to sit down and have a conversation about what the future of your community looks like and where we can make changes. And we'll be open with you in terms of where we go. But we very much view this as part of what made us March and Ash. You guys sort of took some confidence in us and gave us that trust, the first to do it sort of outside of where we started. And so we very much view this as a home base, just like Mission Valley. And we look forward to continuing to do our best to do it right and to be open and come to you and have these discussions about enforcement. How do we do that? Advertising and expansion, where we do that. I will say, I think we had talked about this before, we are continuing to talk with the City of San Diego. That is our view, the city should consider potentially sitting with us and having law enforcement provide some of the security, not at cost of the city. But one of the things we talked about, the City of San Diego, is it may be possible to close a regulatory sort of enforcement loop by trading out hired security guards for potentially retired or off-duty police officers that would close, in our view, a big enforcement loop. I think that's good for the community and good for us. We have no problem with doing that and having those people there on site. And this is probably for further discussion, but we think that that does close an important enforcement loop.
Thank you very much for sharing your insights. I appreciate that. Is there anything else from staff?
Mr. Gino?
I do have a question about one of number four on your conditions of approval, and that's community outreach. I was just wondering what plans you had so far for that specific condition.
Thank you.
Yes, so we just signed up for the highest level sponsorship for the market days. We plan on being there during, in the community, providing an educational experience with a booth and materials that will help educate the community about what we do and what we sell. We're going to continue to be a part of those types of community events. And we just had our grand opening last week, actually, and we saw a huge turnout from the community. And it was a really good opportunity to, you know, disseminate information and start sort of begin that community outreach effort.
We also are, sorry, we also are planning like a seminar. We have that suite in the middle. We want to do seminars, and we've already reached out to doctors, that's all, what do you call holistic doctors? There's not many of them in the valley, but we want to reach out to whoever's willing to have these seminars. And we're probably, by the end of the year, we'll have one big one, where it'll probably be a four-hour seminar, if you can come and go as you go. But we're actually been working on that as of last week, because it's kind of hard to get people to come here or find the people here. So we're working on that for the educational part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, no, only comment I heard about the grand opening was there were a lot of good buys. They liked the specials you guys had.
Yes. Some good food, too.
Yeah, with tacos.
Mr. Dale?
I have nothing. I'll just, I'll speed up the process. So move that.
Okay, got a motion?
One second.
In a second, please vote. Motion pass. Moving on to E2, discussion action, City Hall sewer line. Take this jacket.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we're just simply asking that it continue to the emergency actions for the sewer line at the City Hall. We've finally got all the paperwork turned around, all the insurance is ready to clear. The work is scheduled to be completed the week of October 7th.
They can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I thought I was picking it up. Anyway, all paperwork has been turned around, all the insurances are in, the bonds, everything is back and forth, and the work is scheduled to be completed the week of October 7th. So we're asking to continue seeing urgency until then. It's expected to take about a week and be completed by the 11th of October.
And we're still at a not-to-exceed? Are you okay with that number?
Yes, we're still okay. Nothing has changed.
Okay. Any questions on this?
No questions at this time.
Let's look at a flash. So move that.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. Motion pass. Moving on to E3, discussion action, the granulated activated charcoal, activated carbon filtration system.
Mr. Mayor and Council, again, this is to accept the GAC system or the Granular Activated Carbon System and release retention. We've had the unit up and operating for about a year now, and so we've had a few hiccups, but nothing major. It is up, working. All punch list items have been corrected, so it's merely, please accept the project and release the retention.
Okay, any questions?
When are we expecting to see the next round of tests that we need to see how we're doing in compliance?
We've had three of them since then, and we've had no violations.
So the last three tests have all found us in compliance. We've had no violations.
That's correct.
And so you expect that going forward, that now this is going to continue to keep the water where we want it, yes?
The next one we take will be the questionable one, which is the one at the highest heat, the highest water use and the highest chlorine demand. That is the one, if you recall, we told you that the third, fourth quarter is the one that could possibly be there.
Is always the one that we worry about.
There's always the one that we worry about. We don't know that yet. But to date, they have all passed.
Well, we know that some of the citizens in the community still bear the scars, if you will, of those previous letters advising them. So it's nice to be able to get the word out to the public that we've tested it now for three quarters under this new system, and the water's testing clean, no violations. And so we want to make sure everybody has that same awareness.
Yeah, we have no public notices to send out to the state at this time.
Terrific. Thank you.
Also, let's make it clear, when you're saying you're worried about it, it's, we're worrying about what the test results from the state.
What the test results.
The water's fine.
Water's fine. We're just worried about the test results.
Trust me, if they find a way to.
They're always looking for a way. Well, it's nice that we've addressed the water quality issue so positively, and it's been getting better. So that's great. Thank you. I'll move to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, please vote.
That's for number one or are they?
Oh, yes.
This is our number one.
That's number one. Okay, motion pass.
I'll make a motion to release the retention bond, $16,470 and 42 cents.
Okay, got a motion?
One second.
A second, please vote. Okay, motion, motion pass. Moving on to E4, discussion action, purchase of replacement equipment for the water treatment plant.
And then, Mr. Mayor and Council, this, we have one of the VFE drives on the high-service pumps that is broke out. These are the pumps that pump the water to town and create the pressure within the town. We're currently on a backup system. In your photo, or in your packet, we provided a photo to give you an idea of the size of the drive. That drive is about six and a half foot tall. On the second photo, it's the components on the left side of the drive, which are some internal circuit boards and stuff that are now obsolete with those drives that have failed. And so it is to purchase the equipment and have a technician come in and replace the internal components, or several of the internal components in that drive, so that we can get it back into service and move forward.
Okay. Any questions on this?
Sounds like we need it.
Another one of those, it's time, right?
It's time.
When was the last time this was replaced, do you recall?
When we bought it brand new, it's never been replaced, never been worked on. This is the first time in 10 years.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll move that motion.
Got a motion and a second, please vote.
And I know 10 years sounds short, but realize it runs every minute.
It runs.
No, that's, 10 years is constant.
Constant running.
I'm lucky I can keep moving after 10 years.
I'm not going to comment on that one.
There are people that would question that.
Okay, motion pass. Moving on to E5, discussion action, reclassification of general office clerk position.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is the reclassification of the general office clerk position to the administrative assistant position within the Public Services Department. Currently, this position has one sole occupant, Gisella Solozano. This is a Teamsters position and is subject to meet and confer. We have discussed this with Teamsters. While the general office clerk position served the purpose of the individual getting employed with the City of Imperial, her duties have exceeded far and beyond that to that of an administrative assistant. During her review, it was requested for the consideration of a title change, just in that nature itself. However, after examining her duties and at the recommendation of her supervisor, Mr. Jackie Loper, and analysis, we do agree that she should be reclassified into that position and move to the appropriate range as such. The impact to the budget is the $2,454. Again, this doesn't meet the meet and confer obligation of Teamsters of that 5% of moving to that new range, so we're in compliance there. The funding is coming out of water and wastewater because she solely works on water and wastewater projects. And I can stand for any further questions, or Mr. Loper can as well.
Any questions?
None for me.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Okay, motion pass. Moving on to E6, discussion action, range classifications within the MSPC Collective Bargaining Unit.
Yes, so before you, again, you have, this is within the Management Supervisory Professional Confidential and Police Captain Bargaining Unit. We are moving the second-in-command manager positions into the range appropriate for those. You've had a couple before you moving into a range 98. This is to further that. In addition, we do have our finance director, who we would be moving into a range 101. This is moving to the closest step to their current step. Obviously, the highest impact there you will see is the planner. That funding is coming out of the general fund, if approved, out of our contingency monies from fund balance. I'll stand for any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Were these a result of negotiations? How did these range classifications come to light?
These are a result of the directors for each of these positions making a pitch for those individuals. I know that they can stand and speak with that. Our chief, Barra, had made a request for the consideration for the captain to be moved from a 96 to a 98. Our community development director, Mr. Mora, had made a pitch for the planner, currently listed Thailand, to be moved from an 84 to a 98. That was, should have been done during our class and comp study. That was an oversight by the city. So we are making that recommendation now to move that in line.
And were these budgeted for in the 1920 budget?
No, they were not.
Is there some significant change in any of these positions that is generating the need? When you're talking, you know, $21,000, $22,000 change for a position, is there something significantly different about the position now as we look forward?
The breadth of the duties of that position that are before you. Unfortunately, I do not have the new job descriptions in front of me that were adopted when we went through the classification compensation study. But the planner position itself is in charge of all divisions when our community development director is out. She also has firsthand on each project that comes in, verifies that, meets with the director on a daily basis. And is there anything that?
And that position also supervises assigned personnel.
I guess my question would be, how many people does she supervise?
I would have five.
Five, okay.
But that's only in your absence.
Well, with six in my absence, well, it would be, I'm sorry, five.
No, but she's not doing, is she responsible for their supervision while you're around as well?
Well, it's the sub-yes.
So you're, so the supervision of all of them is delegated by U-Town to her?
We said this wasn't in the, in the study?
This was overlooked. With the moving of the different range reclassifications, if you recall, back on July 17th, we reclassed a large number.
Yes.
It should have been included in that.
We spent several months going over that.
Yes. It should have been included in that.
Can we get more time?
Can we get more time, like, for the next meeting? Can we get written, maybe some written information that we can look at?
The job descriptions and stuff, since you're talking about something that was, you're talking about a significant impact to the budget, and, you know, on a tight budget.
Yeah.
And we haven't seen documentation or backup that goes along with this. Nothing against any of the employees being deserving, but I'm, you know, again, job descriptions, et cetera, to demonstrate what we're discussing would be helpful.
Absolutely, we can definitely table that and bring it back to you on October 2nd, if you're comfortable after reviewing the information.
I would.
Table it.
I hate to say it, but yeah, I think just to be fiscally responsible, I'd move to table it till we've seen the backup.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we don't need to make a motion to table it, right?
No.
Okay.
If you wanted back on.
Then, okay.
Yeah.
Then I'll make a motion to table it this way and bring it back as an action, not on the next agenda with your company and requested information.
Okay, got a motion?
One second.
And two seconds, please vote. Okay, moving on, E7. Discussion action, City of Imperial Public Library closure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you're aware, the City of Imperial, along with all the other city libraries, partnered with the County of Imperial Library to apply for a grant through the California State Library for a program serving families with autism. That was awarded, and we, the county received two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the twenty-nineteen-twenty fiscal year. In preparation for that program, the county has contracted a specialist to come down to provide an all-day training for staff, and that will be held on October 11th. So, in order to enable all our staff in the city to participate in this program, we're asking for the closure of the Imperial Public Library on Friday, October 11th.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, Laura, is there any motion?
Second.
I'll make one. Second.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. Okay, motion pass.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. With that, moving on to F reports, Mayor and Council member reports. We'll start on my right, Mr. Eugene.
Not much to report here. I did go to the Quayle Meadows opening last night.
Nice.
Took a tour, a couple of their model homes, and they seemed really nice, so.
Good.
That's about it on my end. I heard that, I didn't have a chance, I had to go see my mom's, I didn't get the opportunity to do the nine-eleven event, but it looked like it had a really incredible turnout, and I'm thankful that everyone had participated.
Thank you. And I feel bad that I missed that Quayle opening, but I saw it too late, so. Mr. Tucker?
I'm good.
Good? Mr. Dale?
Went to Quayle Meadows last night, too. Went to Quayle Meadows last night and talked with all of their representatives, and quite a nice track, really nice homes. So, and also Saturday, Councilman Pecotl and myself both went to March and Ash show opening, and very nice. It was interesting to talk to some local nurses that were there from the hospitals that were happy to have something that was an alternative that is working for people, so it was nice to talk to them, so it was a good weekend and a good week, so that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Mr. Pecotl?
As Jeff said, we were at the March of Ash, and I did enjoy that. It was, I'm very impressed with the facility, very impressed with the investment that's been made to bring something that comes across as very high caliber and very well-thought-out coming into the community. I love seeing locals employed, people I know, working behind the counter, it's a lot of a bunch of strangers in there, people who've been trained and they know what they're doing, learned a lot, talking to some of the vendors, they had a lot to share. So, I appreciated the effort that went into that, it's nice to see. Overall, it was nice tonight, though, Mr. Matowski thanked us for the speed limit change. I know that's not happened very often, but I gotta tell you, that was nice to hear. I, for one, like the speed limit at forty-five, I think it's worked out, I know not everybody is happy. And I will admit, I like others, sometimes forget it's forty-five, and my daughter has to hit me and remind me. You know, that's why we have co-pilots sometimes. And overall, I'm very pleased with what's been coming, what we're seeing coming out of the city staff and everything that's going on, and the planning for upcoming events. And I know that us getting in the paper this last week, you know, regarding a controversy or a perception of a controversy between us and the chamber is unfortunate. And, you know, I just want to reemphasize, we want events to continue in this city. We want Christmas in a Small Town to continue to be a part of our community. We're not trying to change anything, we have not denied anything. We are still waiting on a completed application for Christmas in a Small Town. Two weeks ago, while we weren't able to stream the meeting, unfortunately, we very clearly asked the chamber to provide us, to bring in their application, to get it finished and get it turned in. They've only turned in incomplete document, and we need a complete document. Unfortunately, last April, we learned a lesson about public safety when we had an incident at our final market days of the season, and it could have been tragic. We were very fortunate that the individual who drove through the market days towards the end of the evening didn't injure anybody, and we were very fortunate that law enforcement was able to apprehend her later, but it awakened all of us to how exposed we were. So, asking anybody that wants to come in and put on a public event to have a plan for public safety as a part of their application just makes sense. We've all learned, and we don't want to learn through tragedy. We want to learn through the near miss and avoid the tragedy. Also, we want them to continue to support staff's efforts to support our community. We love this town. You know, at the end of the day, none of us on the board here work for the city. We serve the city. I serve as a city council member, and it's about service and dedication, it's about giving to the community. And we're not always going to make decisions that everybody's going to like, but we are always open to listen and to talk, and we invite anybody to be a part of the conversation. And if there's anybody in the community that wants to talk to me, my numbers and my email are public, and they are more than welcome to talk to me. I am available. I'm busy, I'll admit it, but I'll make myself available for people that want to do that, because we want to be involved with what's going on in the community, we want them to know where and how things happen. Again, that's why we brought up things like the budget tonight, to show what our balances are, because there's misunderstandings. And so, we want to continue to try and educate our community, and I appreciate the people that have been streaming us online and watching the meetings, I appreciate the effort staff has made to make sure our cameras are working, and the mics are being picked up, and that we're showing the screens up. It continues to get better, and we do all of that to serve the citizens of Imperial. It's not going to be perfect, but if we're not moving forward, we're dying. So, I appreciate everybody's efforts to move forward, thank you.
Thank you very much. I do want to say thank you to staff. The staff did participate in nine-eleven stair climb, we had a good time.
That's awesome.
We had a great time, and I just said this the other night. I was proud for our staff that was there, both participating and on duty with, you know, helping with the event. The City of Imperial did happen to beat the City of All Central. So, just want to make that public. We also did beat the City of Brawley.
Yay.
We also beat the City of Collexico.
Awesome.
Hopeville, and, yeah, everybody else, so we did a really good job, so hats off to staff, we had a really good time. So, thank you, it was one of the biggest events that, you know, we've seen here like that. So, we just hope that next year we can make it even bigger, so thank you to staff, hats off, and we look forward to next year. So, with that, I know I've seen all of.
Yeah, and everybody else.
Yep. I still, you know, seeing the city, it's getting nice and painted, all cleaned up, and, you know, it's looking great, so thank you very much. But I do, I do actually have two questions, Amber. I know last time you weren't here, and Priscilla was here, the fence.
So, in the manager's report, it is in there, but it's good for the public to hear as well. The Savannah Ranch retention basin has a fence that was removed. The request for bids has gone out, it will be advertised this Sunday and next Sunday, and the close of that will be October fifteenth. It was reported October sixteenth, but that was changed since it was typed up and submitted to the city manager's office. And then, the complete date is estimated to be December first.
Thank you. And then, I have seen for the general public that is watching, we do have the ongoing project of putting the lights at Sunset Ranch, at Basal de Sold, and, correct me if I'm right, it's going to be Sky Ranch is the other one.
Correct.
So, all those are going, lights, you'll have lights at the basketball courts, and you'll have lights at the playgrounds, correct?
Yes.
So, it's, you know, more of the stuff that we're doing as a council here to be able to help our community, to help our kids, to be able to do stuff during at night, when, you know, the summer months that are hot, so. Thank you to staff for doing the hard work on that. Thank you for all you guys do for the city, I know we're a great city. Daryl, thank you, I know that, you know, when we hear that, that we're in a deficit, and it's untrue. The numbers don't lie.
No.
They're right there, so feel free, it's online, click away.
Could I say something real quick with that?
Yeah.
It always seems like, doesn't matter what organizations you're involved with, or a community or anything else, you have a small number of people that will complain, that will have something that they don't like, or per se, the council, or staff, or whatever else. That I find in anything, and what kind of perturbs me is I read through social media last night, several people that complained, it's the same ones that complained, and I flipped on the phone right now just to see if any of them were on here, not one's on here. So, it really gripes me that things are said, and all it takes is somebody to come here and ask us a question in person, or they're welcome to call me anytime, I've always said that. In fact, staff knows that you can use my cellphone number anytime, give it out, I don't care. I posted it in a newspaper one time, I ran for county supervisor, I don't care, I don't run, I don't hide. If you want the true facts, come here or call us on the phone, we'll be happy to talk to you.
So, thank you very much for that, and members of the public, and we're always here, we're always available, these are the things that we do. We're here, we're trying to do the best we can with the city, for the city, and for all its residents. And it takes literally an army to run a city, and this is a small army that you're seeing, so we do our best.
That's right.
Thank you, guys, very much for everything you do.
Then I'm going to tag on real fast, last night on social media, there was one comment that was made by a citizen, and I appreciated the comment. And what he said was, his name is Matthew Zen, and he posted that he hoped that everyone was doing, was speaking out or acting out for what was good for the community, not good for themselves. And I was happy to be able to say in response, that's the best philosophy in the world if you're going to be involved in city governance. And I know, sitting at this table, not one of us is here for ourselves. We are all here to serve, and that's a beautiful thing. But I also know, looking around the sides and looking at who works for this city, the employees and the efforts that they put in, they're working on behalf of the city. We see that from you all the time. We see it in the extra hours you put in, we see it in the extra pride you take in your job. We see it in the way you defend your staff, and the way you advocate for them, and we appreciate that sincere desire to serve this city. And I appreciated Mr. Zen bringing that point last night, because it's something we all need to remember. We serve. This isn't a job, this is a service. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, so with that, thank you, guys, and I'll move on, and we'll start on this side. Well done. Nothing?
How was your vacation? You may have been a while, we missed you.
Your hair got longer.
Your hair got longer.
Wherever he was, it's tan.
Yeah.
No, I was at the ICSC.
Ah. How was that experience?
It was great.
Yeah, how was your hotel?
We had a lot of meetings, and I'm providing a report to the city manager.
Good, give me an autograph. All right. Laura? Alex? Amber?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just have one additional date to provide you on a project that's ongoing. It wasn't available, it was confirmed today. So, with the Eager Park Playground Surfacing Project, that project's start date will be September twenty-third, and we have confirmed today that the engineered wood fiber will be delivered on October third, so that will be installed, so by the end of the day on October third, the playground project will be complete. So, during that timeframe, we will be closing the park, because there will be heavy equipment in the area, but it'll be worth it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to this side, Jackie?
Life's good.
Life's good. Chief? Dennis?
I have nothing.
Nothing. And let's see, who do we have? Damon? Liz? She's texting.
Does the county PIO have anything to add?
All right.
Give her a chance and a microphone.
We have a camera, too.
Lindsey, yeah, if that's the county PIO, it wasn't fun to say anything, but since you asked, we are having a very large event on September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. The Imperial County, the inaugural Imperial County Hemp Summit and Expo. We are hoping to celebrate this new industry that's coming into Imperial County that we're very excited about, a new commodity that can definitely fire up our agricultural industry and potentially add a lot of processing and products being not only grown here, but also produced here, and produced and processed here as well. So, it's our first event, we're excited about it, it will be held at the Imperial Valley Fairgrounds September twenty-seventh, it's a Friday, we'll be hosting panels, discussions on a variety of different subjects, subject matters. We've got panelists coming in from all around the country, special guest speakers. And then, Saturday, the event will be open to the public, will be our expo. It will be filled with a variety of hemp-related, industrial hemp-related vendors, producers, and processors. We invite you to join us at that event, we're excited, and bringing it to Imperial, so there you go.
This past week, I noted, a friend of mine from South Dakota shared on Facebook a map of by county nationwide where hemp is being grown at this time, being produced. And it was really nice to see Imperial County, all alone down there in that bottom part of the state, the little yellow on there showing that we've begun that industry here as well, so it's nice to see.
Two hundred and fifty acres.
Right.
We definitely have our challenges, and we have a lot of people that are very excited about it. Our Board of Supervisors is a hundred percent in supportive of the industry and anything that we can do to help advance it. We are definitely on board there, we're having a lot of discussions in different areas, so it's a new thing for us here in Imperial County. The growers are very excited about it, you can see by the registrations. To produce that crop, they have to go through special registrations with our agricultural commissioner. You're seeing a big influx in that, planning for the future as well. We've had some crops in for the summer, and they've been up with a few challenges, but, you know, we're learning, and our growers are learning what to do, what not to do, what works with our climate. I'm excited for the winter months to see how that grows as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for the update.
Debbie, I missed you, I'm sorry.
All right, nothing to refer to.
All right, so with that, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.